So our last forum this evening, we have all six candidates lined up. And to my left, I believe, is Mr. Dimstale. Next to him is Mr. Johnson.
Wesley Dowdy.
Wesley Dowdy, I'm sorry. And Mr. Baines. And Mr. Maddox. And Mr. Ruttberg. And so, Mr. Dimstale, if you wouldn't mind starting with a one-minute open remark.
My name's Ronnie Dimstale. And I would appreciate your help in being elected to District Five Board of Commissioners. I'm a product of Newton County, born and raised in Newton County, graduated from Newton County High School. With intermittent years away in the Air Force, working in the computer business, a few things like that, I've been here all my life. And I've invested my heart in this community. I know the people throughout the community, I think, as well as most anybody does. I've spent a lot of time individually with a lot of people. I know the geography of the area, I know the history. And that gives me, I think, a good platform, a good solid base for working for the betterment of the community. I think I know where we are, I think I have an idea of where we need to go. There are certain basics we need to look out for, we need to be careful with the budget of the county. My ethics, my integrity.
We're at a minute, sir.
Excuse me.
Mr. Johnson?
My name's Phil Johnson. I have been in Newton County almost all my life. I went to school here, I commuted from here to college and law school, I raised family here, I buried two daughters here, and I've served in, practiced law here for over 38 years. I represented Newton County in the Georgia House of Representatives. I've served a time as county attorney. I also served as chairman of the board of directors at the First National Bank for a period of time. I have been a businessman here in Newton County. I've started and operated a chain of daycare centers, a large healthcare facility, spa facility, and I've developed residential and commercial land for over 30 years here. I'm running for the fifth district board of commissioners seat because I have become disturbed on all levels of politics, at the partisanship and personal agendas which have threatened to paralyze our government.
Mr. Johnson, we're at a minute.
Thank you.
Mr. Dowdy?
Thank you. My name is Wesley Dowdy, and I'm 25 years old. And as some of you probably have heard, age has become an issue in this race. But instead of talking about my age tonight, what I want to talk about is experience. In my short 10 years, I've done more than most people have done in 20 or 30 years in business. I have managed $164 million in hotel assets, I provided oversight for $55 million in hotel budgets, and I have been entrusted with $50 million of private investment from individuals. This race comes down to experience. I have been the person in the hotel business and in the hospitality industry who have went in, turned struggling assets around, increased revenue, streamlined expenses, and I know how very important it is to keep our employees happy and keep Newton County moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Baines?
Hello, my name is Marcela Baines, and I'm running for county commissioner of District Five also. I am a local minister here in Newton County. I've been working in, with church for over, I don't know, maybe 15 years or so, working with different variety of people. I am a small business owner also, so I do know how to deal with budgeting. The reason I'm running for county commissioner is because I believe that we need people on the board who care about the citizens of Newton County. It's been too long that we have had people on the board who got their own agenda, who want to do things for their own selves. We need people who care about the people of this county. It's the people of this county who tax dollars are being spent, it's the people of this county who property taxes have to be paid. We definitely need somebody on board who care about the people of Newton County.
Thank you. Mr. Maddox?
Hello, Levy Maddox. I've been here all my life. The plan and the absolute is I will be here the rest of my life. Forty years so far. Got four kids, wife of 16 years. I have spent the last 18 years since college in the corporate world and working at a local business. I've worked in every, I believe, every aspect of business. I've managed budgets on the purchasing procurement side, I've had a $44 million budget responsibility, I've had 120 employees, I've worked on the sales side, the marketing side. I love this community, and you'll probably hear, you've already heard some things this evening from the other candidates, and you will from these candidates, but my only absolute promise to the citizens of this county is to put the community needs above self and to do things that foster this environment long term. Thank you.
Mr. Ruttberg?
My name is Jared Ruttberg. My wife Jennifer and I have been married about 15 years. We moved here to Newton County in 2004 after I got out of the Army. While I was in the Army, I had two company commands, one of which I took to Afghanistan. I have dealt with government budgets, I managed $24 million budget as a budget officer while in the military. Since moving here, I've been a corporate project manager for Lithonia Lighting, and then I own my own company. I own a remodeling company that's managed to survive through this downturn in the economy. And my wife and I also own two retail businesses, two oil changes here in town. So we've had a lot of experience dealing with tight budgets and a downturned economy, taking businesses that failed and making them succeed. And the last thing is, I have three great boys, they're nine, seven, and less than 12 months, one's trying to walk, so it kind of makes the home life a little crazy. Thank you.
You can hold the mic, we're going to start with you. I'm going to ask this question twice to make sure everybody understands it. The Board of Commissioners has taken great measures to balance the budget this year. The problem is, the budget is declining. Eventually declining budgets lead to zero. As business owners, what would be your business plan to increase revenues for the county with the assumption that property values stay flat for your four years in your term? Once again, VOC has taken great measures to balance the budget this year. The problem is that the budget continues to shrink. As business owners, what would be your business plan to increase revenues for the county? Mr. Ruttberg?
The short answer is, we need to bring in industry. Our tax base right now is an 80/20 split between residential property tax and then the industrial and commercial side. So we've got to bring in industry to go and turn our tax base around. How do we do that? Industries don't just magically wake up and say, "You know what, I think I want to go to Newton County." We compete against neighboring counties, we compete against every county in the country, if not the world. So we have to recruit industry, we have to go out there and get in front of them. The economic development wing of the Chamber of Commerce is that vehicle in order to do that. We have to support that because they're the ones that go out there, get in front of those industries, get in front of those businesses, and bring them here. I know they've asked for some additional funding, and it's very difficult in these times to justify additional funding. However, they've got a track record that's proven that it works. We need to go and look at it and look at that return on investment. Basically, they're going to go out there and they're going to be the ones, they're going to help bring in jobs, bring in industry, bring in that tax revenue, that sales revenue that is going to balance our budget out.
I guess my approach, number one first and foremost, is to add a very fiscally responsible, conservative approach to the finances. Protect our money that we have. As Hunter said, it is very limited, it has been flat, it has been declining for at least three years in a substantial, substantial way. We're talking millions. So, you know, you protect what you've got. Second, there's three areas that I believe we've got to do, and the first two are very much linked together. We've got to bring in new companies. That's retail, that's industrial, commercial. Baxter brought us a big, big splash. We're going to have, I don't know, 12, 15 years of ripple effects from that splash. We've got to take advantage of that. The current board, I believe, a couple of years ago, three years ago, identified the chamber as the arm to recruit the new companies. We've got to support them. I'm sure they need extra money. I will have conversations with them to define what that is, and then how to hold them accountable for that investment.
I'm going to take a little different approach. You're going to hear all, most of us say pretty much the same thing. Well, let me tell you, you got to have somebody that's going to push the button. Mr. Hall, I go to all the budget meetings, I go to all the commissioners' meetings. Mr. Hall came and he presented a budget. It's 100 and so citizens in Newton County, hundreds of thousands of citizens in Newton County. We had, when he came to present the budget, we had two commissioners that didn't even bother to show up, didn't care nothing about the budget. That's 40,000 citizens versus that was not even heard. That's 40,000 citizens. So, you know, yeah, we got to get the industries here, but if we don't get the chamber an opportunity, if we don't fund them and get them an opportunity to use their will, they're a great sales team. It's their job to go out and sell Newton County, to bring industries in, bring business in, bring retail in. If we don't fund them, how are we going to get it done? The property, our property values are decreasing. So we got to do what we say we're going to do. We got to stand behind our word, and we got to mean what we say. If not, we'll be stuck at the same old level with the same old budget, with the same old problems. But give the chamber a chance. They are a sales team, they represent Newton County, they go out and they work hard to do what they do. And they got a great track record. So I say we get behind them 100%, give them what they need to get the job done, and I believe we become a better Newton County.
We see this all the time in the hotel business where, when the economy goes down, hotel owners want to cut expenses. And cutting expenses and managing efficiencies properly is key to a successful budget. But the number one thing to fix declining expenditures is to drive your revenue. And the only way to drive revenue, as Mr. Ruttberg said, is to go out and attract new industry. But we're not going to attract new industry if we continue to decline the services that we have. We have to focus and prioritize our spending. We have to focus and prioritize our spending on public safety so that the citizens of Newton County and those that are looking to come to Newton County are going to feel safe. We have to focus on improving our infrastructure so when they move here, they get the services that they need. And we need to focus on giving the chamber what it needs for economic development in an accountable way. Thank you.
The situation that we are in is that we have had declining real estate values now for over five years. Our digest has shrunk significantly. Unfortunately, we have, at the county level, only two sources of revenue, that's ad valorem tax and sales tax. The attraction of industry is paramount because the ripple effect that they have, we've got to increase our per capita income, we've got to have better jobs. But to do those things, we're going to have to make an investment. I think the investment in the chamber is a wise investment that we need to make. But understand, that money doesn't go to run the traditional Chamber of Commerce, it goes to create economic development in the county. Now specifically, it takes a while for economic development to occur when we're attracting industry in. We need to do things to enhance our sales tax revenue because that's more immediate, it'll have an impact faster, and it is more within our grasp to be able to do that. To do that, we're going to have to encourage retail, services, restaurants to come into the area. We're going to have to look hard at the liquor referendum that we're going to have this year because that opens the potential for more restaurants. It lets us compete on Salem Road with all the restaurants that are on the Rockdale County side, and that allows us to begin to increase our sales tax again. We have to look at all our user fees. We have to, we've done about all we can do on absolutely squeezing the budget. The Board of Commissioners has worked hard to do that, now we need to look at revenue.
State law requires that each county have a balanced budget each year. As the income declines, the services have to decline to match that budget. There's no question about that. Things should be addressed about saving money, but I think the specific question was on the income side. How do we address that outside of the ad valorem taxes? There's two basic ways. The industrial development, which the Chamber of Commerce has been active in over the years, and have had successes, not only in bringing new businesses in like Baxter and some of the others in more recent years, but expanding the ones that are here now. And I think 40-some percent of the new jobs on average comes from expansion of companies that are already in the county. And the Chamber of Commerce works hard to nurture those businesses that are already here so that they can grow and prosper and love this community just like we do. The other way is through commercial growth. People sometimes criticize Walmart, but a good Walmart will produce in excess of a million dollars in revenue to the county each year. If you think about that, we can do some things with a million dollars. The Chamber of Commerce has worked in that direction. I think we need to sit down and partner with the Chamber of Commerce and the Board of Commissioners not see themselves as a know-all and end-all, but to reach out for help and talk across the table, get outside of the box in how we discuss and what ideas come up and how we're going to pursue them, that we can do some things to bring money in while still working toward the industrial development, which is the best of all worlds.
Thank you. I want to ask two clarifying questions that got brought up, or issues that got addressed. First is for Mr. Dowdy. Can you clarify, you talked about the need for driving revenue, but also providing services, safety, infrastructure, and continuing to fund the chamber, but in an accountable way. Is there accountability in your mind that is not in place that should be?
No, not at all. I just think it needs to be maintained. I think that you need more money than you've asked for, potentially to attract new business. I just think that the taxpayers deserve to see that in a transparent way, and they deserve to see their return on investment, although it's not always immediate. They still need to be up to date on what's going on.
Thank you. Second, from Mr. Johnson. You talked about retail and saving, keeping the retail dollars in Newton County. How would you go about attracting retail?
What we have to do is, we have to create a comprehensive plan, as we have with industry, to attract retail, restaurant services, entertainment, those aspects which can create sales tax. One of the things we can do is to look hard at our regulations. We need to create an atmosphere where certainly we are making sure that quality is in the developments that come in, but we don't need to be overly burdensome with our regulations. We need to create a user-friendly atmosphere. I know some counties have gone to one day where they get all their department heads that a new coming, a commercial operation has to deal with, where there's a one-stop-shop. You go in and you meet all the people you're going to have to deal with in that regulatory process. Those are the things that we can do to make us more user-friendly and attract industry in here, I mean, retail in here. The other thing we've got to do is partner with the city of Covington. We have got to get on the same track with the city of Covington. People need to look at it. City of Covington is the economic engine which drives Newton County. And the other thing we need to look at is, every resident of the city of Covington is a resident of Newton County. We're in this boat together. We have got to work together.
Thank you. All right, here's an interesting question. We're going to, I'm going to ask this, the question, that is. And if you're in favor of the question, you're going to come to the left side, or my left. If you're opposed to it, you're going to go to my right. I'll ask it, and I'll ask it twice to make sure we're on the same page. As we've talked about in terms of the request for increase in funds for the Office of Economic Development, the Board of Commissioners made a motion in their approval of the budget to review the sales tax revenue, specifically off of the Walmart store, both in, I believe, December or Jan, or November or December, correct me, in December, and then again in February of 2013. So the existing board will have a look at it, and the new board will have a look at it. That being the case, if additional funds from sales tax revenue have come in and all other departments are taken care of as you see fit, will you choose to support an increase to the Office of Economic Development? If you're in favor of the increase, if you'll come to the left and explain your position. If you're opposed, if you'll go to the right and explain your position. Does that mean, do what? Is everybody in agreement, then? Because we can move on. And, okay, so let me make sure we're understanding this very clear. Because this will come up, and we, I personally will be standing before this board in February of 2013 and reviewing that budget. If funds are there from sales tax revenue, you will vote to support an increase in economic development efforts for the purpose of recruiting, retention, and workforce development?
Since you worded it that way, yes. I was going to qualify my answer, but since you worded it that way, I don't need to.
All right, very good. Mr. Johnson?
Absolutely. You know, it's, when revenue becomes stagnant or declines, one of the first things to go is advertising. In reality, a good businessman knows that's when you need to advertise most. And that's kind of where we are in industrial growth. Our revenues are stagnant, the economy's slow. We need economic development more now than we ever have.
Yes, I would support it. We need investment. One Walmart isn't going to fix the problem, and we sure don't need another Walmart. So what we need to focus on is investing in additional job creation through bringing in new industry.
Yes, I support it. And, you know, I believe there's other ways that we also could find money to invest in economic development if the chamber come up and asks for it. I think it's been too long that we, when you come up and ask for additional help and it just swept up under the rug. So yes, I do, I do support it firmly.
I support additional funds for the economic team, but I also want to point out, you kind of asked two different questions there. I read that as two different questions. Your first question said, if the other departments are taken care of, what does that mean? Do the 600 employees that got lost time and lost money over the last few years, do they get taken care of first? You know, were you talking about additional percentages for the department, or were you talking about the employees of those departments? I mean, you know, whatever that is defined as, I certainly support the current board's decision to support the chamber and the recruitment of new business. I think that's the absolute must going forward.
And I want to speak to that. Thank you for pointing that out. Because I did, I did ask that the first time. And the second time, it did come out exactly, which probably where you were going to qualify. So I will own that statement.
Yes, absolutely. And I would like to point out something about the economic development aspect or that group, is that they do actually also look at some retail. Because I know, I was personally asked about a Sears location, I think, that was looking at moving here. So they don't, aren't limited solely to industrial, though that is the primary focus.
In a Hunter Hall style of questioning, we're going to continue this. If the answer is yes, why don't you raise your hand? Have any of you gentlemen ever been convicted of a crime? So, no hands raised, so I take that to no. Speeding tickets, well, we've all been guilty of that, I'm afraid. So Mr. Ruttberg, the question is going to start with you, then. If elected, you'll oversee budgets and policies. Is there anything about your past you feel the public should know or needs to know about you?
Regarding negatively, no, there's absolutely nothing. On the positive side, though, I have a lot of experience dealing with tight budgets, both with nonprofits in, you know, this recent economy, for multiple organizations around the community, dealing with it from a business owner standpoint, having to manage budgets through this economy, and also managing budgets in the government environment.
Okay. Mr. Maddox?
From a character standpoint, no. You know, I'm a fourth generation Newton County fellow, and I, you know, I think my entire family has been in the fishbowl. If you're here 40 years, people know about you. On the professional side, I believe I bring a very positive approach to things, a open door, a very much needed professional outlook on things. And I've dealt with budgets, dealt with tight budgets, I've dealt with increased budgets. I've continually looked for cost savings, which should be an annual goal. So, thank you.
No, there's nothing in my history. But running a small business, I have learned that it is very important that you look at as much as you can save, but get the best out of everything that you can save. So I am familiar with running a tight budget, and I'm ready to get to work for Newton County.
Mr. Dowdy?
Nothing negative in my past. But on a positive note, as I said in the very beginning, experience matters. This is what I do every day. I serve as vice president and partner of a company called Duke Hospitality, and my role is to manage and provide oversight for all of our hotel assets. I write all of our budgets. I maximize our budgets where there are places to maximize. I'm responsible for our sales. I drive our sales when they need to be driven. I know how to take the top line and bring it to the bottom line and return money to investors. Likewise, that's what I want to do for the citizens of Newton County. Start at the top, flow it through, and put it back in your pockets.
Mr. Johnson?
No, on the negative side, I don't know of anything. On the positive side, I've been involved in state government, I've worked on state budgets, I've worked on a bank that we operate here, First National Bank of Newton County. I have run a number of small businesses. I understand what we've got to do on the budget, and, but I understand also that we have got to, we've got to get along together in working on that budget, and we've got to, again, work with the city of Covington, utilize their expertise, and help move our revenue side along by attracting new commercial operations and new industry.
Mr. Dimstale?
If the past is any predictor, I can tell you what happened when I was in government before. We had a different kind of budget challenges. Today, the challenge is, the income is going down, and we need to maintain services as best we can. In the past, as you remember, in the early 2000s, mainly because of national politics and national policy, growth got totally out of hand, and Newton County was on the front line of that. Attractive community, people want to come to a nice community. Too many houses were built, the infrastructure was taxed too much, there was the need, every year, everybody was asking for far more money than they got the previous year. Increase taxes, we need more service. And the pressure then was different, but it's the same dynamic. You need to look at what money you have and how you spend it, and set priorities within those limits, and not go out asking the people for more money so that you can do more things for whatever people want to have in the county.
And for the final question of the evening, Mr. Dimstale, this was a submitted question from the audience. Your district covers the majority of the cities of Covington, Porterdale, and Oxford. In the past, there have been conflicts between county and cities, specifically on issues regarding transportation, economic development incentives, SPOLOs projects, aging infrastructure, and landfill fees. As commissioner, how do you represent both sides fairly? I'll repeat the question. Your district covers the majority of cities in Covington, Porterdale, and Oxford. In the past, there have been conflicts between the county and the cities, specifically on issues regarding transportation, economic development, SPOLOs-
issues regarding transportation, economic development, SPOLOs projects, aging infrastructure, and landfill fees. As Commissioner, how do you represent both sides fairly?
People of goodwill who are working toward the same goal will work to compromise to reach that goal. By compromise, that means working together. I have always been a peacemaker. I work with people from different government entities, institutions within the government, institutions without the government, so that we would work better toward the benefit of the community as a whole, without regard to partisanship, without regard to who wins this argument, without regard to how did you vote last time, I'll get you next time. That kind of a thing needs to be off the table. If, in talk with Porterdale, Covington, the cities involved, and not limited to that, but all cities in the county, because once a person is elected to Board of Commissioners, they work for the whole county. They're elected from a district, but we work for the whole county. So when it comes to getting compromises, working together, we need to work throughout the community, not in just those communities within our district.
You know, when I was, when I was with the, in the Georgia House of Representatives and the county attorney, I worked with a gentleman, Roy Varner, who was a Commissioner that was elected in 1976. Roy came in with some interesting ideas, not a lot of formal education, but a very bright, talented man. Roy built consensus. We need to, we need to get back to building consensus. You know, as District Commissioner, you're going to represent all those cities and the county, but everybody that's in those cities is a resident of Newton County. We've got to work with those cities, build a consensus. You know, we didn't have, under Roy's administration, a lot of three-two votes. Most of our votes were five-oh because the board sat down, they worked it out. Roy went to the board members, and the board members thought of the big picture, what is best for Newton County, not just watch best for my district. That's what we've got to get back to. We've, and if we work our job at building consensus on decisions, and you know why you've got to have consensus? Because you want everybody in Newton County to buy into the decision. And that's the only way to do it is if we, if we reach a solution that everyone can buy into. You may not get everything you want, there may be gift tape, but we'll reach a consensus decision and we can move forward.
Mr. Doughty?
Thank you, thank you. If I'm elected to be your Commissioner, first and foremost, when I'm sworn in, I'm going to forget which party I'm running on and what ticket I'm running on. I think the most and only thing that is important to the citizens of Newton County is in their best interest. And I believe that the only way to create a unified front to represent shared citizenry, across multiple municipalities, is to build strong relationships with the other decision-makers. And then work, as Mr. Johnson just said, on building a consensus on how we can move forward in the best way for those citizens. Thank you.
Mr. Baines?
As a local minister here, you learn to listen to all sides of stories. And then you come together and you put together a plan that works best for everybody. And I believe that's what the center here has done. They came together with a plan called the 2050 Plan. And that plan will include all of Newton County. And I believe that if we get behind this plan and support this plan, we won't have a split in Porterdale or a split in Mansfield or a split here in the City of Covington. I believe it will help join this whole community together. And that's, that's what we need. We need what's best for the citizens of Newton County.
I would, I would also add to, you know, to what you just mentioned. There's also a strong presence from social circle within this district. You know, it is easily the most diverse district from a lot of different angles. I will tell you that I've already met with three mayors, had conversations with three mayors to find out what their communities need. I have had conversations with councilmen for the exact same thing, to find out what the issues are, what's the views are. I think we should utilize what this room has become to represent, a neutral spot to come, to take these jackets and ties off in a cooler environment, I hope, and roll up our sleeves and figure it out. You know, there's, there's no question, some of these small towns, some of the small communities, they're feeling like they're being left behind. And, you know, a couple of them probably are. So, you know, I think each, each of the, there's about a dozen up here, each, each person needs to realize that every vote affects every citizen in this county. Okay?
Right. If elected, I'm elected to represent District Five, but I also have to consider every resident, you know, every citizen of Newton County. And I believe that's the same thing all the gentlemen up here said. It is a very diverse district, and anybody that has worked with me around town, whether it's a friend or not, if it's, when dealing with me in a business environment, which is how I consider government needs to be run, is like a business, you know that I'm going to be a straight shooter, I don't play favorites, I deal with things with family members, I deal with things with good friends, and I treat everybody the same. So I, it is my responsibility, if elected, to treat all the residents, all the citizens the same.
In your closing remarks, Mr. Ruttberg and the rest of the panel this evening, I would like to have you all address why. There are six of you sitting up there this evening, two for Democratic, four for Republican. Obviously, there's going to be more than likely a runoff in the Republican race. Why should someone vote for you conceivably three times to get you in office? What is the one thing you're going to set yourself apart with, and why should someone vote for you three times to get you in office?
Because I said so. I'm kidding, come on, it's hot in here, we have to laugh a little. Why should you vote for me? I've got a lot of experience, not just, you know, in business, which I've talked about, but also I do a lot of work with nonprofits and organizations in the community. I didn't wake up and decide I'm going to run for office so I can become involved. I'm running because I have been involved. I've done a lot of work from the outside, and now I realize for me to make the best impact, I have to do it from the inside. If you look in the back there on that table, there's yellow cards and it's kind of got some bio on me on what I've done for our country, what I've done here in the community. And, you know, if you look, there's a laundry list of organizations that I'm in, and there was the building, building our homes program that was run through here, they had a list of nonprofits on there, and there were 31 that I counted this morning that I have been involved in here in Newton County. And I think that's going to be the greatest involvement that you're going to see from anyone.
Mr. Maddox?
You know, again, I'll say I'm a, I'm a lifelong citizen of this county. I'd certainly hope to see my kids and grandkids prosper in this county. I think the county is about to reach a point to where we are very prosperous. I think there's a very positive outlook ahead. I can't tell you how much I appreciate the efforts of the current Commission and other leaders within the community to bring Baxter in, to plant seeds. And, and I want to, I want to water those seeds. I want to, I want to be involved in a heavy way between my family and the kid activities, which I'm present at most or all. I do own a small business myself. This is what I chose. This is what I want to get into. I was not recruited by anyone. No one asked me to run. I think I had to kind of encourage my wife to let me run. And, you know, we, I thank God that she did. Thank you.
Mr. Baines?
Again, my name is Marcella Baines, and I've been, been in Newton County all my life. Born and raised here, went through Newton County school system, went on to Middle Georgia College and got married, you know, to my wife Shamika, and go to church here. Everything I do is here in Newton County. Newton County is a place that I love. I love helping people, I love working with people, and I love being a part of progress. And I am one that will stand on what I say. If I say I'm going to vote for giving funds to economic development, I will. And I'll, I'll be accountable for what I say. Again, I only need two votes. I only need three, I need two. And so vote Marcella Baines, County Commissioner, District Five. God bless you.
Okay. Mr. Doughty?
I chose to run for the District Five commission seat because I believe that although the current Commission is doing a pretty good job, that we lack solid, practical, business leadership on the Commission. And the way business people look at things and the way government looks at things, as we all know, and as we've all seen over the last few days on the national level, is completely different. And I believe that we need prudent thinking. I believe that we need to look how to streamline expenses, but also believe we need to know how to incentivize our public safety workers. We need to get them the raises that they deserve. We need to focus on infrastructure. We need to focus on things that are going to make Newton County better so that we can attract new industry, provide jobs for our citizenry, and continue to move Newton County forward. I moved here six years ago. My wife and I have three children, and I love Newton County. And it's not enough just to love it, I felt like I needed to be involved. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I think that my age, my experience, and my training give me a unique ability to function well in the, as a District Five Board of Commission member. I, I decided to run because I think Newton County is at a, at a crossroads. We have a lot of advantageous situations in Newton County. We have water, lots, most of metropolitan Atlanta doesn't have water. We have an attractive downtown. We have probably more higher education than any county in a similarly situated around us. We have the opportunities. We have Baxter coming now. But none of those things guarantee success if we don't utilize them properly, and that's why I'm running. Thank you.
I'd like to take my time to address the other side of the budget issue. Mr. Hall presented the idea of how can we increase our income. We also need to look at how can we use the resources that we have now. There are different ways that we could do it. When we're looking at budget, we have to zero it every year, we need to lay everything on the table, and so there are no sacred cows on the table. We look at everything, everybody's on the same level. The first one, and probably the most productive as far as saving money goes, is that the EMS, Emergency Medical Service for Newton County, needs to be integrated into the fire service. Most counties do that. It's much more efficient. They have a lot in common in the way they address emergencies. Both are trained in medical, both are trained in, in a quick response. We can have as good or better service at a lower cost if we integrate that with the Newton County Fire Service.
Mr. Demstall, thank you. Well, gentlemen, thank you for your time. Audience, thank you for coming on such a hot night. On behalf of the Covington News and the Newton County Chamber, we appreciate you coming.